Sure, yeah, the time being past 6 o'clock. We have town moderator Gary Roberts, Chair of the Finance Committee, Rick Parker, Selectmen Mike McCarron, Town Clerk Council. I'm Angus Jennings, Town Manager. I know Archie is going to be joining us, but Casey, if you want to kick things off?
I'm ready. I think I'm going to do things in a slightly different way than I said. I'm going to talk a bit about logistical details of the meeting, but I'm going to start off with just a brief summary of town meeting. There may be people who haven't participated before, and I thought it would be wise to sort of explain a little bit about why we're having the town meeting at all. And so this is what I had to say. The small towns in Massachusetts, which means fewer than 6,000 people, usually have a town meeting form of government. And that's the important part of this. It is the government. It is not just a debate or a discussion, but we are actually the legislative branch of the town meeting, of the West Newbury Government. The executive branch is the selectmen. And so we pass the budgets and we set the salaries for the elected officials, and we vote on the local statutes, the bylaws, et cetera. And the Board of Selectmen is charged with executing the activities that we have appropriated the funds for. So our power in town meeting is the power of the purse. We appropriate the money for the town to do what it needs to do, and the selectmen take action on those appropriations. The business that comes before the town at the town meeting is stated in the warrant, which is prepared by the selectmen, but it's a collaborative effort between the selectmen, the Finance Committee, the Town Manager, the Chairs of other committees, and the citizens who bring issues before the town meeting. So the warrant actually reflects quite a bit of work that was done by lots of people to bring the appropriate issues before the town. When we get to the town, when we get to the meeting, the warrant is our agenda, and it warns us as what's going to be discussed at town meeting, but it is not the motions. We don't vote on the warrant, and we can't amend the warrant. Once the warrant is put together by the selectmen, that is the warrant for the meeting. When we get to the town meeting and we open the meeting, we go through the warrant article by article, and then someone makes a motion. A motion does not completely reflect what's written in the warrant. It could be slightly different, and we will have cases at our town meeting. Well, that will occur, where the motion may not exactly correspond to what you see in the Finance Committee booklet or on the website with the warrant. As long as the motion is within the scope of the warrant, that's fine. It's not a problem, but we do not amend the warrant. The warrant is fixed. We amend only the motions that are made under the warrant. Once the motion is discussed, may or may not be amended, then we vote on it, and the motion then becomes what we have appropriated, or not appropriated, for the particular article. The line item budget is a very long article. It's one article, but it's a very long, which contains the entire proposed budget for the town. And this is where we're going to have some changes this year from our normal way of handling this. Normally, when we get the line... I'm sorry, there was a message that popped up on my screen. Normally, when we take up the town, the line item budget, I read each line, and then the Finance Committee recommendation, which is printed in the booklet, is the motion on the floor. We don't discuss every line individually. We go through the entire line item budget. And if there is a desire on anyone's part to discuss a particular line item, people call hold. After we've gone through the entire line item budget, which is quite long, we go back and we pick up only those items that had a hold placed on them for discussion. And then we discuss, vote whatever's necessary on those particular items. At the end, we adopt the entire budget for the town. In the interest of saving time, so that we... There are two reasons why we want to save time for this meeting. First of all, we want to minimize the contact that people have because of the COVID-19 epidemic. But also, it's summertime, and I'm conscious of the fact that it's going to get warm on Saturday. And so we want to expedite the meeting as much as possible so that we can get our business done and still finish up in a timely fashion, so that we won't be sitting there in the heat. So to expedite the line item budget, what I intend to do is to just read... They fall into categories. I'll read the category. I'll wait to see if there's a hold. If there's a hold on any of the items in any of the categories, we will come back to that after we go through the whole line item budget. But I'm not going to read all the verbiage and say, "The recommendation of the Finance Committee is whatever it is. It's in the booklet. You should follow along." So that should expedite the line item budget discussion quite a bit. If people have problems with any of this, if they don't understand what's going on, if they think that they're not being heard, that is not my intention. And you simply rise wherever it is you're sitting, and you say, "Point of order." So that if things are confusing, if you don't understand what we're doing, if you think that you've been left out of the discussion or whatever, just rise and say, "Point of order," and then clearly state... And then you can move to the microphone. You have precedence over if anyone was speaking, and you can present your point of order, and I will do my best to make sure that you feel like you're being included in the meeting. When we finish the line item budget, we'll go to the special town meeting, which is a series of articles, various appropriations. Then we'll go back and pick up the annual town meeting and go through what's left on that meeting. And then after that, we have another special town meeting about the citizens' petition about the 40B project. So we'll pick that up immediately after the annual and first special town meetings have concluded. I'm hoping that if we can keep things moving along without making people feel like they're being rushed, that we might be able to conclude the whole thing by noon or so, so that we can not be sitting there in the heat. I'm conscious that it's very hot. Now, I'd like to say just a few words about town meeting because there is some confusion about why we have town meeting. The cities in the common... Or the towns in the Commonwealth that have fewer than 6,000 people generally have their government by open town meeting, which is everyone who votes in the town can come to the town meeting, discuss, and vote. Larger towns have what's called a representative town meeting because there are too many people in the town, and they elect representatives from their local communities. But we are not that large, so we have an open town meeting. Anyone can come. The town meeting is not just a discussion. The town meeting is part of the government. It is the legislative branch of the government. So what we vote on at town meeting limits the selectmen in terms of what they can spend and what they can do for the town by what we appropriated. So we have a very important role to play in our own town governments, pure form of democracy. The business is presented in the warrant. It's prepared by the selectmen, but the cooperation of a whole lot of other people who worked very hard to put this together. And we do not vote on the warrant, but we vote on motions. Now, at this particular town meeting, we're going to have a slightly different format for this because, once again, we're trying to get things to move slowly. Wrong, to move fast. So instead of having people come to the microphone individually, present motions, present the recommendation of the Finance Committee, which would take up a lot of time, we're going to have people on the bandstand. I'll be in the middle at a podium. And then there will be one selectman and one member of the Finance Committee up there at the bandstand. I will read the article. The member of the Finance Committee will give the Finance Committee recommendation. The selectmen will read the motion. Now, all the motions have not necessarily been written by the selectmen, and they don't necessarily approve of all the motions, just to expedite the meeting. So the selectman who's reading the motions is simply the selectman who's reading the motions. They still come from the various organizations that have brought business before town meeting. But this will eliminate having people having to get up and come to the microphone and come back and all that stuff. It's fairly easy to take care of when we're in the annex, but in this open, outdoor town meeting, it would be very time-consuming to have all this going back and forth. Once the motion is read, it is on the floor for debate. We will have two microphones on the inside of the fence at the ball fields so that people can line up behind the microphones. One will be for people who want to vote in support of the motion. One will be for people who want to vote against the motion. And there will be lines to indicate spacing six feet apart. We'll continue to have discussion until we've exhausted the discussion, so don't worry about being cut off. But please limit your comments to two minutes because we want to make sure that everyone who wants to speak has an opportunity. If you've already spoken to a motion and you feel like you desperately need to speak again, please wait until everyone who wants to speak for once has a chance. Then if everyone who wants to speak once has had a chance to speak, and there are people who want to come back and speak again, I will entertain that. After the motion is discussed and amended, or whatever happens with it, we will vote as we normally do. So you will have voting cards. You'll have a red card and a green card. The green card is for "I," the red card is for "no." After the discussion, I'll ask all those in favor, please raise your green card. All those opposed, please raise your red card. If I can call the vote by just visually looking out there, I will. If it's too close to call, I'll call the tellers, and they will be the people who are checking you in, and we'll have a counted vote as we normally do. There won't be any secret ballots at this meeting. Once the meeting is adjourned, we will dismiss everybody by... Well, okay, so that's the annual and special. Then we'll go on to the second special town meeting. Once all of the town meetings are finished, whoever's left there in the ball field will be dismissed like you do at a wedding. So we'll ask people to go row by row so that it avoids bottlenecks at the exits, which are small, so that you won't be crowded together, which is what we're trying to avoid. If you need to leave before the meetings are over, of course, you can do that. There should be ample space between the... There are going to be posts in the field that indicate where there's a seating area. You can sit with members of your household who you live with. But if you don't... But you shouldn't just sit with friends. You should sit by yourself if you're there by yourself. And if you need to get up, either use the facilities or to reach the microphones, or anything else that you might need to get up for, there should be sufficient aisle space that you can walk through without too much close contact to anyone else. The posts that indicate the seating areas are going to be 16 feet apart, so you should have ample space to walk. You just need to be careful where you walk to make sure that you're not getting too close to each other. If you need to get up and use the restroom, or we also will have an air-conditioned tent so that if you're suffering from the heat and you need to cool off, there'll also be medical personnel there, the emergency personnel. So if you're feeling unwell, the heat's getting to you, or whatever, you can go and take advantage of the medical personnel. There'll be people there if anyone does get ill, or whatever, to transport them. If you need to use any of those facilities, of course, you can get up and leave. But you should avoid just mingling while you're at the meeting, getting up and moving over and talking to other people, or whatever. As long as you're fine where you are, you should just stay in place so that we avoid having too much contact of people between each other. Everyone who's in the ball field is expected to wear a mask, but there is seating for people who don't wear masks. And it will be over in the area where the audience for the bandstand releases. There will be microphones available there. We'll also have some chairs in the parking lot by the bandstand for people who either have issues with sitting on the grass or have park handicapped, or whatever. There will be some chairs on the pavement in that parking area by the bandstand. There will be microphones up there, too, so you don't have to go all the way into the area that's fenced in to use a microphone. There will be a microphone right there. So if you're either in the no-mask area or the chairs-on-pavement area, you will have access to a microphone. And I think that's about all I have to say about the logistics. Of course, I will answer questions about the logistics if you have them. But I'd like to open the meeting up now to questions about the warrant, or both warrants, or all three warrants as it is, so that we can get rid of as many difficulties as we can before we go to the meeting, so we can avoid having long delays while we have people get information that they need. So the main purpose of this meeting is informational, so that if you have questions about any of the articles on the warrant, if questions about the line item budget, or if you have questions about the logistics of the meeting, please ask them, and whoever is best equipped to answer your question will respond. So with that...
Casey?
Yes?
I'd just like to add the check-in procedure. Okay, is that what we're going to have is... We're going to have two tables set up on either end on that portion of the driveway between the two parking lots by the ball field and behind the town annex. And we're going to be utilizing iPad technology. So you can go to either one. You don't... We're not going to be divided by streets. So and there'll be double table, so you can maintain the distance. You just have to give your name, and they'll verify your street address. And then you'll be given your two cards, and you'll be registered in. It should be a quicker way of doing it. We're going to have the registrars there at 9:00. They're going to have two tents set up for them, so they'll be under a tent. And so you'd go to that area and then proceed to a spot, either on the field or one of the other spots that we've designated.
Thank you. I did forget that. Is there anything else that you or the selectmen remember that? Obviously, I forgot one thing. I could have forgotten another one. Or does anyone have any particular, just general questions?
I'm here.
Alyssa, you have a question?
She needs to unmute her.
There we go. My question has to do with the citizens' petition for the special town meeting. Is there a sunset date for that? And also, how would that exactly work? Will the selectmen or the Board of Zoning Appeals, or who will decide how to spend that money?
I can answer that. Is that the motion, unlike other motions, the Board of Selectmen discussed this last night. And what they've suggested is that the sponsors of that particular petition will give a motion, and I'll work with them on the wording of it. And the proposed wording will basically say that to... Basically, appropriate a sum of money to be used by the Board of Selectmen to hire professional services for this project, to review and to examine and analyze. Does that answer your question, Elise?
And will there be a sunset?
And there'll be a sunset clause on it.
But we don't know when at this point.
No, it hasn't been decided what the motion will be because it is from the participants, and they're the ones who are bringing forth the articles.
Okay, so to give a little structure to this, if it doesn't work, we won't do this anymore. But I'm going to try it this way. If there are questions specifically about the line item budget, which is the first thing that we'll take up, does anyone have any specific question about the line item budget? Oh, I should say, if you're not familiar with Zoom, if you go to the bottom and scroll over the bottom, you'll see a situation where you can get a chat room. And you can raise your hand there.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so Fay Gill.
Yes, I could say I have a question. This is very basic, and it's really right at the top of the line item budget, the Town Manager's expenses. And I noticed that over, actually, over the past couple of years, the salary and wages has dropped, and it's down now to recommending $70,000. And it may have been explained why it's been dropping, but I don't remember, and I'm just curious.
So you're talking about line three, the Town Manager.
Yeah.
Salary and wages.
Yes. It's dropped from $110,000 to $19,000, $77,000. And now... Or no, actually, I think actual was $109,000. But now we're down to $70,000.
I see.
And it's probably a logical explanation, but I was just curious. I'm sorry, I can't see, guys, because my camera's going.
I can speak to that, Casey.
Okay, thank you, Angus.
So between the Town Manager budget, the Board of Selectmen budget, and the Finance Department budget, there has been some interplay over the last three years in terms of where personnel are budgeted. So for instance, you'll see in the FY19 and FY20 budget, there is no... There are no wages, no salary and wages budgeted in the selectmen line. But there are proposed wages in the FY21 selectmen salary and wages. There is no change in headcount or personnel. In fact, there's a reduction in overall hours from the current year to the next year. But I have made recommendations in this budget to shift where different positions are paid out of. And that's really intended to reflect the responsibilities of those positions and how those have changed in the two years I've been here and the upcoming third year, to basically try to get the budget to better reflect the actual work that's being done. And between the Finance Department, the Town Manager section, where I'm, in addition to Town Manager, I'm also the Finance Director effectively, and the Selectmen budget, there's some interplay between finance support, some of the Board of Selectmen's support with meeting packets and minutes, and some of the public communications that are run out of my office.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Are there other questions about the line item budget? We can always come back to that later if more questions occur.
Hey, Casey, I have one.
Rich, okay, Rich Baker.
And this is Angus. Is the $32,000 increase, selectmen salary and wages, part of that chuffling around of responsibility you were just talking about?
I heard the question was related to the $32,000 in selectmen salary and wages. And I didn't hear all of the question, but I'll just say what I can, and see if you can tell me if this responds. So that's the Residence Administrator position, which Annie Sterling holds. So that she had been budgeted in the Finance Department. But we've shifted some job descriptions in the last year. And so her position is proposed for FY21 in the Selectmen budget. So again, it's not a new position. It's not any addition to personnel. In fact, it's a reduction in hours from the current year.
Okay. My other question was on the snow and ice removal budget. And would it be appropriate to increase that by $50,000 so that it's realistic? If we overspend our budget this year when there was no snow, it just doesn't make sense to leave this at $150,000, because that's not realistic.
So I can speak to that. I don't know if anyone wants to jump in after me. I do know this is a topic that's come up at the Finance Committee, and the Finance Committee, I know there's at least some number of members who I think would share your opinion. This current year, while there was not a lot of snow, there were a lot of ice events, and those are actually much more costly because of the use of salt and sand. So there was some surprise from the selectmen and the FinCom of why snow and ice went over this year. But the DPW Director gave a really detailed presentation to that that I believe satisfied people. In terms of the level it's been budgeted, it's been steady over the years. And as Rich, as I think you probably know, this is one of the few areas of the budget where the town does have the authority to overspend what's in the budget to deal with what's needed, and then that's resolved on, as we're proposing with the supplemental appropriation. One of the things, and Mike McCarron may want to make sure I've got this right, but basically, once you increase your snow and ice budget, you're kind of locked into that going forward. And it's a lot more difficult to reduce than to raise. So we've budgeted based on kind of a five-year average. I think it probably is a little bit low, but it's not, in my opinion, unreasonably low if you look at the five-year history.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you. That's all my questions.
Chris Scott Lambert?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. I have actually... I have up to six questions. I'm hoping that they can be answered. If you'd prefer me to wait till the meeting, I will be glad to.
Mostly that's why we're here.
Okay, clarification. I guess I went through the budget earlier today. Starting in the Police Department, I noticed there was a jump in overtime expenses. And I was just wondering where that... It's a 5,000-plus difference. I was just curious as to where that came from or what accounts for that.
I can answer that.
Thank you.
The selectmen, especially me being me, actually want to reduce the police overtime. We've heard for several years that adding officers to the force, more full-time officers should reduce the need for overtime. And every year, we get requests to increase the overtime budget. And this year, the selectmen have actually tried to reduce the overtime budget. The Police Department requested the increase, but there's a discrepancy between what the FinCom recommended and what the Board of Selectmen recommended. But if you look at the Board of Selectmen recommendation, we're actually trying to lower that.
Okay. I was just, you know, curious as to the difference. Thank you.
If I might just supplement that with one piece of information. The police union contract expires at the end of June, and negotiations are ongoing for next year's contract. So budgeting for police was a bit challenging because there's not a settled union contract yet. So that doesn't directly relate to your question, but it's an important point I wanted to make.
Part of the context, thank you. My next was down in the education, which is, I think, line 23. And I had three questions there related to Penn Tucket. There's a great big capital assessment jump. And is that... That's related to the middle and high school, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then there's an increase in Whittier and Essex-Aggie. And does that reflect the number of students? Or what is behind those increases?
Whittier is actually going down.
Oh, okay, technically, yes.
Big significantly, yes. So that's going down because of enrollment. And then the Essex, over the years, the town has consistently budgeted for one student a year, Essex-Ag. We don't know when we prepare the budget, what the actual enrollment will be. And we're legally responsible for whatever the actual enrollment is. So over the years, it's never been more than one. Well, what do you know, this current year that we're in, it was two. That's why you'll see elsewhere on the warrant is a proposal for the current fiscal year because there's some funds that we owe to Essex-Ag that are not budgeted. So going forward, what we're doing is we're budgeting for two for next year. We don't know what the actual enrollment will be, but we have a reasonable expectation that would be two. It could even be three. If it's three, we're going to need to come back to the... If it's three, we're going to need to come back to the voters at one of next year's town meetings for more money. So what you see is the cost for two students.
Thank you. I thought it was something like that. And moving to to line 28 on the council of aging, that was under the salary and wages. That's a salary increase that that jumped up by 10%?
That's right. We have
Yeah.
In the, if you look from FY19 to FY20, you'll be, you'll see a pretty sizable jump in council on aging. That was a reclassification of the council on aging director's position.
Okay.
FY20 to 21, the director's position is held level or it's got the 2% cost of living that's throughout the wages. But what we're proposing is a increase in the wage for both the site manager, who prepares all the meals, as well as the van driver. Both of those are fairly low-wage positions that have been, you know, their their wages haven't been adjusted other than COLA for quite a while. And so we looked at the market as well as the quality of work that they do. And both selectmen and the finance committee were persuaded that those were justified increases.
Well, thank you for explaining. So there are two positions in there. And certainly Teresa has done a great job during the pandemic, reaching out. And I mean, she always does a great job, but particularly in this situation we've had the last several months. As I said, these are just mainly clarifications. And to that, on line 32, the library expenses, I noticed the, they were down by, something in the library was down by several thousand. I'm trying to see if, did I look at it right?
That's a result of change in personnel. We had a director retired toward the end of FY19.
That's right.
And a new director who's terrific, but who's earlier in in that person's career.
Her career, okay, that 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 certainly makes sense. And I think I'm getting to the 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 end here. I appreciate your patience with me. I think that may be be it. Thank you.
I, Gene, I'd just like to say, I appreciate your questions. This is exactly why we're here tonight, so that we can avoid wasting a lot of time going back and forth to microphones. And your questions were good, and you cleared up a lot of things for a lot of people, so I really appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you, Casey.
So are there more questions on the land item budget? Okay, well, we can go back there if we need to, but let's open it up now for the rest of the warrant. Let's do the annual town meeting warrant first so that we can and I'm not going to, I'm not going to take things up in order or anything like that. But the annual town meeting warrant has 24. And yes, 24. The the motion will be to take no action on some of them, including article number 24, which is the zoning by law changes. And the reason why the the selectmen have decided to move no action on these articles is simply to shorten the meeting a little bit so that we can get through it as quickly as possible and get people out of the heat and and out of the contact. So you can ask a question on any article on the annual town meeting, and we can take them up as you as they come in.
Elise had a question on article 14?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The first one is, so the finance committee voted no. What would happen if the town voted no on this is my first question. My second question is, have we found a use for car post? And my third question is, where does it stand in terms of of action occurring on this?
Angus, you want to hit the first ones or hit the next two?
Sure, so the the once the town borrows for the construction costs related to the restoration of the Soldier and Sailors Building, the town is legally obligated to pay the debt service, whether the funds are appropriated or not. So the answer to your question in any of the next 20 years would be, even if it's voted down, the town still has to pay it. For FY21 specifically, the debt service has not been issued yet. So there was some discussion about whether to potentially pass over article 14. But the decision was made to to keep it on the warrant to recommend passage, which I I think is the right decision. And that's to preserve the town's options for, right now, we're not ready to issue long-term debt because we're not yet to the point of bidding out construction. And Mike can speak to that a little bit further in terms of the design process. But once we do issue long-term debt, we'll be accountable for that. But by keeping the debt service in the warrant for next year, it preserves the town's option to do, for instance, bond anticipation notes if we want to do a shorter term borrowing. So let's say we're ready to award a construction contract, let's say in the fall, which we may or may not hit that target. But if we were, town meeting adoption gives us that flexibility.
I'm not sure I fully understand. If we have not yet issued the debt or engaged in the debt, then we're legally obligated to go forward. Could you just elaborate on that a little bit?
No, no, I, that's what I was saying is, once the debt is issued, we're legally obligated to pay the debt service. And the first payment is typically one year after the debt is issued. So since the debt will not be, since long-term debt would not be issued prior to FY21, the first major debt service payment would not come due until FY22. However, keeping the authorization in the warrant gives the town the ability to do shorter term borrowing if we'd like to do bond anticipation notes during FY21, we would have the ability to do that.
And and if the if the money is, and the idea is, is to put out the amount of what will be the long-term debt, even though realizing that in FY21, we won't approach that. We won't spend $85,000. It it'll be a lesser amount. And if it's not spent, then obviously it it still is part of the the CPC funds. Is that it to your question, Elise?
I just want to make sure I fully understand. So no matter what happens, even if the town were to vote down article 14, even though the debt has not yet been incurred, the town would still be obligated to pay?
No, 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 no. If there's no incurring of the debt, you you wouldn't have to pay anything. It's just that would be a sum of money that would be available to pay whatever amount of indebtedness there is. And the reason that the board of selectmen selected that number is that that's the number that the town will be looking at going forward every year. So anticipation is we won't spend all that money next year. But it's 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 what we, what will be the the debt.
And and it should be clarified that the authorization to borrow has already been approved. So the town has the legal right to issue debt. And approval of this article would ensure that if the town does move forward with that, that we have the appropriation to pay the debt service.
That's very helpful. Thank you.
All right, to answer your other questions presently, what was it? There is, there is, there is any particular use that has been dedicated. Obviously, the car post committee has selected a design of of what the building is to be, you know, to look like. But as to what it's to be used for is not, has not been determined or issued. And with regard to the work, due to the COVID stuff, we're delaying getting a construction contract, which we're, I mean, a a design contract which we're working on. And in the meanwhile, there was some asbestos, not a lot, but in the floor tiles. So the DVW director is taking the opportunity to abating the all that that asbestos so that it's, it won't be part of the, you know, to to get a kind of a head start on it.
And that that is complete. The asbestos abatement was completed fairly recently.
Thank you.
Looks like we've got questions from John Dodge on article 13. I also see a raised hand by John Lambert, but I don't know if that's actually Gene Lambert and if that's a carryover from a few minutes ago.
No, it's not Gene Lambert.
Okay.
I have a question on article seven, will you have a chance? Okay, John, John Dodge, why don't you go ahead?
I'm curious if the limit on the length of comments is still two minutes. Is that something, Casey, you're going to say before the meeting?
Yes, I'm going to limit the length of comments to two minutes. Obviously, as many people as want to can speak. But in the interest of of expediting this meeting, we decided not to have the traditional 10-minute limit on reports and just dispense with the reports. And so the, so we're into a situation where we just have individual speakers, no particular report. The two-minute is to encourage people to get up, have to say what they have to say and 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 move, move on to someone else. If there is a lot of discussion and people who have already spoken want to stand up again, I will allow that. But I ask that you all monitor yourselves carefully. And if you see that there are other people waiting who wish to speak, don't just go and get back in the line again because you want to speak again. But, you know, give, give everyone a chance to be heard. And then if you need to be heard again, that's fine, we'll do that. But we we want to move the meeting along as briskly as possible without making people feel like they weren't heard. So it's going to be a challenge for me to try to make decisions about these kinds of things. But that's the guideline, so we'll see how it works.
Okay, so if I, you said no presentations. But if I, as chair of the Open Space Committee, want to make a two-minute plug for article 13, I can do that.
Well, John, in my opinion, whenever anybody stands up, they're giving a plug either for or against something. So I think that's perfectly in order. And I and I do understand that that I I've seen some comments that indicate to me that people are conflating this issue with the 40B project. So there may be some some need to clarify things for people, and I'm conscious of that.
Okay.
So, you know, if if that situation arises, my intention is not to keep people from understanding what they're voting for. It's just to to move things along and avoid long-winded discussion. But if there needs to be more discussion to clarify the difference between those two, certainly we'll have that until we feel that everybody understands what they're doing.
Okay, just so, I I might as well just say it right here, since we've got 20 or 25 people. There is absolutely no connection between article 13 and the Artichoke River Preservation Project and the 40B project. There's just no connection at all. I think somebody on Facebook made that connection. Second question is, we do have some amendments to the motion. So I, for example, would propose those amendments, then we as a town would vote on them. And if that passed, we would vote on the amended emotion. Do I have?
John, are you talking about the motion or the article?
No, I'm talking, it will be the motion because I can't amend the article. I I mean, I know.
You've presented a motion, which I have on this article. You don't want to present that motion the way it's written now?
No, we've been talking to Angus about it in my, for a couple of weeks. But I know there's still some issues with it.
What I would recommend is, what I would recommend is, if if the motion, the way I have a copy of the motions, the last, the last version that I got from from Michael McCarron. But if that motion that you gave him does not reflect what you really want to move, you have time to rewrite the motion.
If I, if I could, yeah, Casey, this is already well underway. And I was in touch with Vanessa earlier today. Mike was at the dentist today, so he didn't get a chance to look at it. But we have, you know, we're going to connect with Vanessa tomorrow. This is all going to be resolved.
Yeah, what was it? We'll get the the motion. I think that that's going to be happy for everybody, and I think we're already there. And they expressed some concerns, and I think we've we've addressed them. So we'll, the idea would be to have this all done prior to the town meeting.
That's fine with me. That's fine with me. So there would be no need to amend the motion at town meeting.
That's the other changes that you want to make. Or someone else, someone else could stand up and move to amend to it. You know, it doesn't have to be you or anybody from your committee. I mean, there's always, there's always a possibility that someone will move to amend.
Right.
But but that's not what you want to do. You just want to get the motion in the in the shape that you really want it to be in before you make it or before the selectman reads it.
Right.
And it sounds like that's being taken care of, so that's good.
Right, and and I will say that I believe the amendments are largely technical. It doesn't change the essence that we're asking for $175,000 in CPA monies. It's, they're more finer points. So anyway, thank you very much.
I'll elaborate on that with John is that this article is a a cooperative article with the Essex County Green Belt, with the city of Newburyport and the state. And the concern in what Angus and I and Vanessa and John are all working towards is to craft the motion in such a way as to make sure it complements the structure of the particular purchase here because it's not just a straight purchase of a conservation easement. We have to make sure that it's broad enough to incorporate working with all the parties that are going to be part of this land transaction. And so that's why, then when John says it's some technical things, that's essentially what it is. The spirit of the motion is, is, the spirit of the article is exactly, it will say, remain exactly the same. At the end, the land will be protected under a conservation restriction, which the town will have a piece of.
Thank you.
So should we go back to John Lambert, who had a question?
Yes.
Sure, minor question on article seven. For this electrical charging, is this a chargeback where people go and can charge vehicles and they pay for it? Is this free electricity for those who are there? Who is the, who are the consumers and how does it work here?
You're on the special town meeting, John?
I'm not sure which one I meant, article number seven.
That's, that's number seven of the special town meeting.
Okay.
We're, we're not on that right yet, but we'll get to that. Hold that question.
So are there other questions on the annual town meeting?
Yes, I've got one. What are we going to, what is the proposed motion at the moment for article nine? What what's the number?
The number is, what is printed in the warrant is the 652, $652,340 draw from school stabilization. And what you'll see if you look in the proposed FY21 operating budget and the question a few minutes ago about the substantial increase in debt service in the Penn Tucket budget, it's exactly that number, the 652,340. So the selectman's intent in recommending that amount is to fully offset any FY21 tax impact of the middle high school project.
I had a first, excuse me.
Go ahead.
I had a further question on that. I was gonna ask if one or more of the selectmen could say a little bit about the unanimous approval of this article versus the FinCom's unanimous disapproval. I mean, their rationale is in the booklet, but except for what you've just shared, Angus, that's all I know about the reasoning on the approval side.
I'll, I'll speak to that. The, this wasn't the original intent. The original intent for this F, for this fiscal, for the upcoming fiscal year was to, was to use half of that amount. But with, I, I just thought that with the, the unknown, the, first of all, this is money that, that we have been putting aside for five, six years now. And so people that that have been here for a while have been contributing to it already without necessarily gaining any, any benefit from it. And, and like, say, people that, that move in this year, they, they're getting the advantage that, that people before them paid into this fund to, to reduce the taxes of people going forward. So there was one reason was to speed up a little bit of the usage of it for that reason. And the, the other reason is because of the, the pandemic, we've got 20% unemployment, maybe 29% in, in, in the Commonwealth. We don't know how people's finances are going to be, which we're trying to not hit them with a double whammy with, with the pandemic and this capital expenditure big increase. So the money is there. It's already been paid by, by the taxpayers in previous years. We figured this is a year to, to get some benefit out. So that's what our thinking.
Thank you. That's helpful to understand.
So do we want to move on to the special town meeting, the first special town meeting? Or are there more questions on the?
Can you see it? Okay, go ahead.
Yes.
Make an update. I, Casey, I think I heard you say that Article 24, is it going to be no action? Is that the zoning bylaw?
Yes, it is.
Are there any others that, because I don't, it doesn't show up as no action on the?
No, no, the, the, the Finance Committee booklet was put together before the determination was made that certain articles could be postponed. And I do mean postponed. This particular article could result in quite a bit of discussion. It's a hot ticket item. But it's not essential that we do, that we deal with this issue for the town finances. And my main concern and the, the concern of most moderators in the Commonwealth and the people in the Commonwealth is to make sure that we get enough of a budget and appropriations passed that the town can continue to operate because the fiscal year ends June 30th, which is only three days after the meeting. And so we need to get through the meeting and we need to adjourn the meeting so that it goes into effect so that the, so that the money is available to the town. And so when there were items on the agenda that could generate a lot of discussion but could easily be taken up in the fall, perhaps if we have a, well, we will have another town meeting in the fall, but hopefully it'll be easy, easier to manage so that we can save those articles for a time when the discussion could just, you know, take, take place in a relaxed manner and we wouldn't be concerned about getting the meeting finished so we could get the budget on the books.
Right. So are there very many others? I'm just curious as to which one.
There are some others where there's going to be no action moved. One is the.
Casey, I actually have a, I could read a list if you'd like.
Yes, that'd be good, Angus.
Okay, so these, just to be clear, these are articles that the selectman will recommend no action. Because they are on the warrant, it is certainly, someone else could make a motion to approve them, but the selectmen are recommending this for the reasons Casey outlined. So the first is on the special town meeting, Article 6, to do with the $14,000 for tables and benches at the Mill Pond area. That's recommended for no action. Then onto the annual town meeting, Article 6, the Pension Liability Stabilization Fund, Article 7, the OPEB Fund, Article 11, the transfer of $300,000 into the Capital Stabilization Fund is being recommended for no action. Article 15, the purchase of a DPW dump truck for $229,000 out of capital is being recommended for no action. Article 22, to establish a dog waste bylaw. And Article 24, the proposed zoning amendments.
Thank you.
And I hope, I hope it's clear to everyone that a motion to take no action really means at this time. It doesn't mean that you'll never see these items again. It's just that in the, in the interest of keeping this meeting as brief as we possibly can, these are items that could be brought up at a later town meeting without any damage to the town finances. So should we move on to the special town meeting? The first special town meeting, which has nine articles. So John Lambert has a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Basically, it was on Article number seven. I'm just trying to understand what it is and how it works. Basically, they're talking about installation of electric vehicle charging stations at Page School and the 1910 building. Who can use them? Is there a charge for this? Is it free electricity? What is it?
I'll, I'll speak to that. This is Rick Parker. Hi, John. So the intent here is to provide availability of charging electric vehicles which are, are becoming increasingly common and are accelerating in, in their purchase and usage. The electricity used or supplied to charge vehicles will be charged for. Our thought at this point is that we would be charging per kilowatt hour per unit of energy plus a small surcharge to cover the service fee that the company that operates the system. It's a company called ChargePoint. They, they do EV charging stations nationwide. And it, the, the electricity is not going to be given away for free. In fact, it will be paid for at, at, essentially at the, at the town's cost. Obviously, the town, what's being proposed is that the town will be spending some money on the capability, but it's, I look at it sort of akin to providing any other service that the town does. You know, the, the, at least the capacity for the service as the town does with, with other things, sports fields, I mean, you, you could run off a long list of, of, of services that the count, that the town makes available. But the intent is not, is not to pay for the energy, is not for the town to pay for the energy.
Okay. Thank you for the clarifications.
Sure.
And it should be noted that Rick and the Energy Advisory Committee recently uploaded to their web page on the town website, a one-page summary that shows the proposed location of the charging stations. And Rick, I'll post that to the front page of the website as well. I know you'd ask me to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would just add that this is a 92% discount in price for these charging units. And a lot of towns have been getting grants for municipal electric vehicles, which in the end cost less to operate and maintain. There's a lot of statewide interest in promoting electric vehicles.
Could I just do a follow-up question on that? Tom Salvo?
Yes, please.
I, I think it's a great idea, but I just have this question. If nobody plugs into it all year, will it be a cost to the town besides this $8,000 initial cost?
So the, there is the $8,000 cost. There, there is, there will be an additional cost. And Angus, I guess I need to understand how we're handling this exactly, but there is a, we, we are actually going to be participating in a maintenance program, sort of a maintenance slash warranty program with an annual cost. So there will be the, you know, the, the fixed costs of the system. But beyond that, in terms of cost of energy, there's probably a $5 a month's account service fee, you know, just to have a utility. It's five, maybe it's $10 a month. You know, there's, just as each of us have an account fee in, in order to have a utility, you know, a customer fee to have a, a utility account, there will be that. But other than that, there will be no, no other ongoing expense if nobody charges.
So to follow on Rick's point, so this, this issue of longer-term maintenance of these stations was one of the concerns that the Finance Committee raised in their review. And at that time, it was not part of the proposal to opt into this warranty that Rick is discussing. Since that time, the Energy Advisory Committee brought a proposal to the Board of Selectmen to amend their recommendation and to include in the operating budget, the costs of this warranty program. So the Board of Selectmen did vote about two meetings ago, two or three meetings ago, to recommend an increase to the FY21 DPW town building operating budget to cover the cost of the warranty. So just to be really clear, and Casey, you and I haven't discussed this either, so you need to understand this too. That cost is not part of the printed budget in your booklet because it's happened more recently. So the Board of Selectmen did vote to put a hold on that portion of the DPW operating budget and will be recommending an increase of, what was that, about two grand a year, Rick? Was that it? Email made us a short time ago.
Just under $2,400 a year.
Okay.
For, and that, that covers all, all charging stations at, at both locations. So there will be two, two pedestals at the 1910 building, each pedestal having two charging plugs and two pedestals at Page School, again, each having two plugs. So a total of capacity to charge four vehicles at each, at each point. So I just, you know, I, I guess I wanted to, in this particular case, assign a certain amount of, uh, assign credit to the, the FinCom for having pointed out that this was something we hadn't thought out thoroughly enough. When we first came to the FinCom, or when we first, when I first spoke with the FinCom, when, when we were pursuing this initially, the Energy Advisory Committee was, had fairly recent information and was very excited about the opportunity to, to do this with the level of incentive being provided by the utility. I think as Elisa mentioned earlier, the utility is covering 92% of the cost. It's something we would never do otherwise. And we hadn't thought everything through specifically maintenance slash, you know, warranty as well as the actual cost of usage. And since then, we've sort of fleshed out those ideas.
Rick, does this contribute toward our being a green community? This is Gene Lambert again.
Well, I would say it's definitely in line with the, you know, with the, the spirit of our having adopted or, or, you know, become designated as a green community. You know, the, the, the goal is ultimately to, you know, to become more energy efficient and reduce our greenhouse gas footprint. And this works in that direction.
Certainly, but we don't get any official points?
No, no. Well, actually, Rick, we do, because every year we have to submit a report to green communities of the efforts that we make. And then we're eligible for substantial grants for that. Yeah, I mean, I guess it's a feather in our cap, Mike, but, you know, but it, we're eligible for the grant. It definitely is something that will be included in our, in our annual report. It doesn't necessarily, in and of itself, make us more eligible for grants because we would, you know, we, we have that eligibility anyway. So, but it shows well.
Thank you.
Right, we're working in the right direction.
What are the expected revenue for the town on this? Would we be bringing in enough money to cover that $2,500 a year we're gonna be paying out?
It's, it's not intended as a, that was Rich Baker, right? And I think I heard what you said, Rich. It was a little muted. It's, assuming I heard you right, it's not intended as a profit center for the town. We're looking to, to cover the cost of operation. And the, as, as I mentioned at the outset, the thought is that this is essentially another service that the town will make available to, to residents or anybody using the 1910 building. Or, or, you know, the, the sort of the municipal campus who has an electric vehicle or a plug-in vehicle of some kind. Or that uses the Page School.
Well, how, how often will people have to be connected in order to recover our $2,500 a year in expense on this?
That, that wasn't part of the goal, Rich. Just as we don't expect people to pay a user fee to use sports fields or to ride a horse in the ring or to, or to use the library or any other of the town services.
So we are subsidizing the wealthy people that have electric cars essentially? That pay, can pay $100,000 for a car?
Well, they're not necessarily $100,000 for a car. My Prius Prime is probably less than whatever it is you're driving.
But Rich, I, I do think, I mean, you've put your finger on, on the issue. You know, this is why the FinCom was divided and I think it's a matter of public policy. Is this a level of service the town wants to provide or not? And that's properly decided by town meeting. And we'll see.
Could I add in that I think that town vehicles could eventually utilize this in the future? And that would be a, a goal for us as well.
That's a great point. That, that was part of the thought process. I think Elisa may, mentioned that earlier. Thank you.
So are there more questions about these first special town meeting?
I have a general question. I'm sorry, I think this will be my last one, Gene Lambert. I heard on NPR that the state is not going to have the increase in education-related funding that it was supposed to have. I think it may relate to buildings. I don't know whether I have all my facts right. But if the state funding is going down, has that been factored in since the decision may have been recent on the state's part? Or is that going to change things in this budget as it's laid out now? Or just generally, what's the relationship of the state funding and as it changes here and our budget?
Up to this point, we have not been notified by Penticott that there's any change needed and we're in pretty regular contact with them. I do know in terms of the school, a middle high school, we, I'm a, as Glenn Cap... Kepner and I both represent the town on the School Building Committee, and they did confirm that the construction funding that was approved for the middle high school, that's solid, that's not going to change as far as the operating budget. We're not aware of any change. I did speak earlier today with the business manager of Whittier, and their budget's the same. So, but I'll, I'll talk to the superintendent again this week, but I'm quite sure if there was a change, he would have let us know. But, because we are in touch pretty regularly.
Thank you very much. I was hoping that our funding for the new building wasn't affected.
So let's take up, are there any questions about the second town meeting, second special town meeting, which is the meeting called by Citizens Petition? Okay, so seeing none. Are there any questions about the general format of the meeting, how it's going to be conducted? Any sort of questions like that about just the meeting itself in general? Well, if there are no more questions, we can adjourn. I appreciate everyone's participation very much. This is exactly what we had hoped to have, which was an opportunity for people to get information that might be harder to obtain once we're at the meeting because of the format and the layout. And your questions have been very well thought out. And I encourage you to talk to other people that you know who might have similar questions. And I think this is being recorded, and so it will be available for video later on.
Both local cable and the town YouTube channel. Yep.
So if you know of people who may have the same questions, who, who either couldn't come tonight or were unaware of the meeting, please get the word out that this was very helpful. I, I actually learned a lot from this myself. So that's really good. And I hope that you got your questions answered. I'll pause for just a minute here if anyone has any other questions about anything.
Casey, this is Rich Baker. I just want to thank you very much for holding it. I found this very, very helpful. So I hope you do it in the future.
Good, good. Okay, well, if, if everyone's asked all the questions they want, we can adjourn.
I'll just say that I hope we do it in the future, but I hope it isn't as a continued response to COVID.
No, I think, I think it worked out really well. And I'd like to make the regular part of, of town meeting, because it's an easy way to get a lot of information out there.
Yeah, it was a great idea.